All right, we're gonna call this Lamar County Board of Commissioners meeting. The board is January sixteenth at seven o'clock. And if you would, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I mentioned last week we were gonna have a treat for it, but we got it. I mean, last month, we have it this month, and we're excited to have our invocation tonight by Major Leslie Holmes. As you guys know, she has been serving our community for a very long time, and it is a pleasure to have you with us tonight, Major Holmes.
All right, let's pray. God, now, we thank you for bringing us into this new day as we slept and slumbered last night. You kept us and protect us, and we say thank you. And as you brought us into this new day, this morning, you kept us protected all day long up until this point. We love our family, we love people, but people can't do that. You did that, God, and for that, we say thank you. We also thank you for 2024, Father God. We use this particular meeting, the first meeting of the new year, as a first fruit to dedicate it back onto your hands. You've been very good to Lamar County, God. You have been good to the city of Barnesville, and we say thank you. Now, God, as we continue with this particular meeting, we ask that you bounce your weight amongst it, that you be amongst us as we make certain decisions and conversations and innovation, God, and we come up with the ideas that will better the people of Lamar County. Show now your presence and your power with gratitude and love. In the holy name of Christ, we do pray, amen and amen.
The first item we have is the approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner George, second by Commissioner Lovett. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, the next, several sets of minutes from the public hearing date of December twelfth, the workshop agenda December fourteenth, and the regular business meeting December ninth. I trust all of you guys have had a chance to read the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion that we approve the public hearing minutes of December twelfth, 2023, the workshop agenda minutes of December fourteenth, 2023, and the regular business meeting minutes of December nineteenth, 2023, as presented. Second.
A motion by Commissioner Thrash, and second by Commissioner Gillis. Any discussions about the minute? Period, none? We'll call to vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carries. The next item on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, apologies for the interruption, but before we go on to item number six, I'll need a brief moment. May I address the community?
Well, the community don't know yet what item number six is.
Well, that's okay. It's not concerning item number six. May I have the floor for a moment, sir? Thank you. This evening, I was served legal papers by our Honorable Chair Brad White, naming me as co-defendant in Lamar County Superior Court Case 24B-016-F, filed today by the legal firm representing the Lamar County Regional Solid Waste Authority, chaired by Commissioner Nancy Thrash. Also personally named as co-defendants in this case are Lamar County Attorney Scott Mayfield and fellow Commissioner Ashley Gillis. Upon learning today of this civil suit, Commissioner Gillis and I contacted the agent with the Federal Bureau of Investigation, who interviewed us in September regarding the Solid Waste Authority. Although records she and I gathered prior to our September board meeting remain under Department of Justice subpoena and therefore not eligible for open records disclosure, we are allowed to acknowledge receipt of the subpoena from the United States District Court for the Middle District of Georgia. Just as I have responded to the nine previous Solid Waste Authority attorney letters, I will not cooperate with any open records requests related to the Lamar County Regional Solid Waste Authority or the waste of fuel project until such time as I have been directed by Lamar County Superior Court Judge. Thank you, sir. I have copy for Chairman of the Solid Waste Authority Board, and also one so that you can put it in the records currently. Thank you, Carla. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
In the future, let's either add that to the agenda or.
We couldn't add that to the agenda as the sheriff just served me these papers. Thank you.
You have a written document you just read.
I was told he would be here to serve this.
So you could have added it to the agenda, or it could have been done during roundtable comments. But please show us all the formalities here.
I will follow those protocols from hereforth. Thank you.
All right, the next item is the Solid Waste Authority Board appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we table this.
That we do not table.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Mr. Chairman, you have a decision to make whether you ask for a table or whether we proceed as we've directed this unit that we're doing.
That motion started before you, Commissioner Lovett.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this appointment. Both Commissioners Lovett and Gillis are individually named in a lawsuit as just mentioned by John Richards Law Firm against the county for conspiring together to violate the open records law. Commissioners Lovett, Gillis, Lovett, Gillis, and our county attorney Scott Mayfield are the focus of a lawsuit filed by the Mayo Hill Firm with depositions noticed for February the ninth. Mr. Mayfield is conflicted out of both lawsuits. Conflict counsel has to be retained and have the opportunity to review the lawsuits, which we've all said all along, and to properly advise the commission. Mr. Mayfield sent emails on January eleventh and twelve to Attorney John Richard revealing the existence of alleged subpoenas to Commissioners Lovett and Gillis and their production of documents to the Department of Justice allegedly related to the Solid Waste Authority. We have got to get to the bottom of this, of what's going on here regarding Commissioner Lovett and Gillis before any motions from or involving either one of them regarding the solid waste are considered. So I have a motion on the floor.
I'm gonna second her motion so we can make discussion. Second.
There's no discussion for a table.
There is discussion.
There is no discussion for a table.
So you second the motion?
Absolutely. Let's vote.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
All right. And under the circumstances of what we received today, I will vote in favor of the motion to table. This does not mean that.
Oh, shit.
If it's another comment or doubt person, we're gonna have you escorted out. What you don't understand is the rules are if I don't vote, the motion dies anyway. So understand the rules before you.
So let's let it down, of course. Let's let it down and move on to the next motion.
At any rate, the motion is tabled. After the conflict counsel can take a look at it and all this stuff gets sorted out, then Commissioner Gillis can be appointed to the board if that is the pleasure of the board. But at this particular time, my motion is to support the motion, and that is to table the appointment for Commissioner Gillis. The next item on the floor is the conflict counsel. As you guys know, we have been entertaining and interviewing conflict counsel. We've had two candidates that we talked to, one today and one on Thursday of last week. Sean, do you wanna just give us a little rundown on the names of each of the counsel?
Yeah, actually, the first one is on Amy Cowan. We actually got Patrick Jox that.
Jox.
They said German. Both of them come from really good firms, and I think both of them will do a great job with the county.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion.
Yes.
That we approve Ms. Amy Cowan to be our conflict attorney.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lovett. I'm sorry, by Commissioner. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Fletcher, a second by Commissioner Gillis. Any for Amy Cowan? Any discussion? If you know, we call it to vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Give him the drink in hand. Two, four. Oppose?
Nay.
All right, I actually like both candidates. Actually, I think they did a phenomenal job, and thank you, Scott, for those recommendations. But I'm gonna break the tie, and my motion will be for Amy Cowan. I think she did a great job, and I think you will do a great job. All right, the next item on the agenda tonight is the administrative report. So you wanna go ahead?
Now, I do wanna apologize, this microphone is acting up. Get a sound check. Have a reach.
It still can't hear you.
I know. All right, well, Mayor Pro Hill, we had a hundred eighty transports, a hundred eighty refusals, twenty-five cancellations in spots times a month with eight point two five on average. We had twenty-five meter weights from Mupson. And our spinners for 2023 for the whole year should be at a hundred percent, and we're actually below at ninety-three point nine two. So one thing about it, on this next one, I'm gonna show you. But a lot of that's gonna change when we're doing our recruit campaign. We have to book a lot of things from December. That's coming in, we actually got revenues that were coming in for December, so a lot of this changed towards the end of the month. And I will be giving that report next month when we're actually standing. Just wanna give you some updates on the things. We're actually gonna be moving some staff into the administration, new administration building tomorrow. So with that move, a lot of the offices will be moving. So if you have any questions, just try to call us, and we will try to answer some questions. But the windows, got word today that the windows for the tax commission offices are gonna be coming in on Friday, and they're gonna install those. Still waiting on a couple of nights from the campaign guys. They should be coming in this week, and it's signed. Should be installed sometime this week also. Just give an update on the animal shelter. For months and months, we've been going out RFP, RFQs for at least ninety to a hundred and twenty days. We do have a Mr. Wright Woodall, the general contractor, and we've been working with Mr. Armstrong. We are working on some, the last bid we did get in for that RFP was actually a little bit over one point two million dollars. So we're actually working with Mr. Armstrong and Mr. White to kind of bring those costs down. So we're hoping to have a budget for the board approved next month. And today, I met with the State Fire Marshal on the gym, and we actually received our CDO on the gym. So that's complete, so that I'll be marking that next month. And then we did have, like I said, we did have some issues with the jail and the sheriff's office and the courthouse for a little bit of leaping. Some have come back out to review that. So a lot of things, that's receiving about four or five inches within two hours is hard to believe. We didn't have more. So just to let you know, on the loss, we received a hundred twenty-six thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars. And for SPOS four, we received two hundred twenty-two thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars and eight cents. And our TSPS, we received two hundred and two, two hundred three thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. So also did receive some information from Sheriff White requesting some three new squad cars. We're also gonna be able to get those into SPOS four for this year, but with funds not coming in maybe March, the staff has found some, usually these cars around sixty-two thousand dollars a piece, and his staff has been able to find them for thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. So the total of three squad cars will be one hundred thirteen thousand three hundred forty dollars. And what I'd like the board to do is approve a motion. What we'd like to do is buy these out of the general fund, and then when SPOS four funds come in, reimburse that, check with the auditors, and they all said that's fine. I actually was checking to see if I could get it from SPOS three and get it from SPOS three, but they said that was something we couldn't do because of the violence and all that. So thought it's been approved by the citizens. So I just asked for y'all to give approval to purchase three squad cars from GN. GN Commercial. GN Motors. One hundred thirteen thousand three hundred twenty dollars. We'll purchase those from general fund, and then when SPOS four funds come in, we'll be able to reimburse the general fund. And the reason we don't have those funds in right now, we have to, according to the intergovernmental agreement with Outdoor, Barnesville, and City of Milner, we have to pay out City Outdoor first, then Milner, and we should be able to finish it up in March collection. So we'll be able to start splitting it sixty-fourty between us and the City of Barnesville.
I need a motion on those cars.
Do we need to make a motion to amend the agenda first?
Yeah. Might like to have an agenda to add the sheriff's officer's cars to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to add the cars to the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gillis, and a question by Commissioner Lovett to add this item to the agenda, the approval of the sheriff's cars at a reduced rate. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you, thank you, Sheriff and your staff for always looking for ways to save us money.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
We have to vote on that.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
We need a motion.
You make a motion, didn't you?
I need a motion put on the agenda. I made the motion to purchase the cars from GN Motors in the amount of one hundred thirteen thousand three hundred and forty dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion now by Commissioner Gillis, and a second by Commissioner Fletcher to approve the purchase for the vehicles for the sheriff's office. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries. Do you have anything else? That's all I have for the round. Is there a roundtable? Public conference? We have Harold Jackson. As normal, please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Harold Jackson, I'm at two hundred Lawrence Drive here in Barnesville. Number of years back, there was a movie came out, and the name of it was To The Hand Look Hard, started palling. There was a line in that movie, "What we have here is failure to communicate." And I think that's what has been going on ever since this authority was organized. I have in my hand four pages of Georgia law, since we're talking about law tonight. And I don't think it was ever incorporated into y'all's bylaws, but y'all can get to Google these laws, and you can read them for yourself. I'm gonna bring out three points in it. And one of them is for the directors. The director shall serve at the pleasure of the governing authority of the county. You guys are the governing authority. They're serving, the Solid Waste Board is serving at your authority. Y'all are serving at our authority. Oh, that's under section A. Also, under section A, the director shall receive no compensation for their services, shall be reimbursed by actual, I like that word there, expenses incurred in the performance of their duties. And I think from what I understand, everybody gets a hundred and fifty dollars a month for so-called meetings. And I would like to know how you have the stuff to prove why everybody gets the same amount of money every month. To me, that sounds a little fishy. And the bound, law I'd like to bring up is it's under OCGA thirty-six dash eighty dash sixteen, Local Governing Authorities Registration. Section F says, "Any local government authority which fails to register with the Department of Community Affairs shall not incur any debt or credit obligation or shall be eligible for receipt of any state funds at such times of immediate restor, the restoration requirement. Plated to register shall not have any adverse effect on outstanding debt or credit obligation." I got in touch with the law. I appropriate Judge's office, Solid Waste Authority has not registered in the last four years. And if I'm not mistaken, I read it somewhere, I wanna read some of all this stuff. The last time that figures are drawn, it was in twenty-two. It was not registered in twenty-two. So that loan was apparently illegal.
Okay, the next on the list is Mike Perry.
Commissioner Mike Perry, one oh one Maple Drive, Barnesville. Sean, mention one thing that you failed to mention is the election board move. We're not moving out of the old administrative building to stay until June, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm telling you, July is August.
Well, it may be now. But the point is, all of the collection business is going to continue to be there. We'll still do early voting there, and all registrations will take place there, just as we always have, until we get the commission moved. Secondly, I want to make sure everybody saw the letter that came out in the newspaper from the Solid Waste Authority explaining that they're working to save us money and trying not to waste it. Walter, congratulations on the extra business, but I'm sure you didn't do this for free. It's just another example of wasted spending and resources. As a member of the original concerned citizens group, I categorically deny that that we have ever tried to shut the Solid Waste Authority down or ask them to spend money that they didn't need to. We've only asked for an explanation as to why it's taken ten years to go nowhere, and why did we spend twenty-three, twenty-four million dollars and still have no waste of fuel system? And it looks like we might get a ditched system that probably could have bought it for two million, four million. And why are we on the hook for twenty-seven and a half million dollar retail level? All we've asked for is honesty. We're not getting much of that. Thank you.
Elaine Alada?
Elaine Alada, one thirty-one, Stiefel Chase. My husband promised me or asked me to say something nice tonight, so I wanna start with this. I wanna congratulate the commission, especially the two commissioners, Thrash and Trailer, that you certainly have exceeded your ability to fill the room. When I first started coming to commissioners' meetings, we might have had two or three people attending. So I gotta congratulate you on that. But I do wanna comment on the full page ahead that the Solid Waste Authority put in today's Herald Bizzet. You would think the Solid Waste Authority, which includes Nancy Thrash and Ryan Trailer, would be trying to improve the image of the Solid Waste Authority instead of deflecting blame to the concerned citizens. The project was to be completed by two thousand seventeen, making two and a half million dollars a year, which now puts them over seventeen million dollars and counting into the hole. And it has still not been turned on. How can you stop a project that has never started, which we refuse to have in that paper? Number three, at this time, you have been collecting fifty thousand dollars a month from ammo waste, which means you have banked enough money to pay for the first two years of payments. Congratulations, okay? You sold out our landfill to hide your incompetence from the taxpayers and failed to report the failure for this project to start on time to your fellow commissioners and the citizens of this county. The Solid Waste Authority paid for a full age ad in the paper today to smear the concerned citizens. You have to be a taxpayer to have your trash picked up, so in effect, I helped pay for that ad. I don't appreciate it. Okay? I wanna remind everyone that Nancy Thrash and Ryan Trailer have been taking money from the Solid Waste Authority for many, many years. I reported at the last commission meeting that Nancy Thrash was seventeen thousand dollars in county. Ryan Trailer was over twelve thousand dollars in county. So you have both been financially compromised through years. Okay? I'm glad you chose to email Amy, I don't know what her last name is, because today at the workshop meeting, I felt that perhaps Nancy Thrash knew the lawyer that you were interviewing today, it kinda seemed like that. And also, at one time, he had worked for Smith, Walsh, and Associates. So I felt that he would have been compromised, and I'm glad you chose who you chose tonight. And I just think that, I go back to my first comment, I just think it's just so bad that the two of you have not learned how to read a room because you certainly are not doing what the concerned citizens want or the taxpayers of this county want. Thank you for your time.
Last is Donald Hartman.
Donald Hartman, five zero seven Old Milner Road. Got a copy of what was printed in the paper today, a couple of things there. I guess one thing that I see tonight is happening is, again, I'm gonna bring this word up, transparency. We've got some civil stuff happening now. Could that have been avoided? Be transparent. Come over, see what we got. Why do we have, and maybe this is just my opinion, why can't we just say, well, here's where we spent our money? Do it in a simple way. I mean, show us what's, show us what's on the books. Don't be, I feel like we're trying to hide stuff, and that's not right for the public to. Get that image that things are trying to be hidden. We don't wanna be open. We're the citizens. Another thing here that. Another thing here that I see in the, uh, paper article, and I'm, I'm gonna read it from the paper, "The only way the taxpayers could be held responsible for these loan payments is if the waste of fuel project or the other work of the authority is stopped by the forces who never want to see it succeed in the first place." Again, I've only been here a little bit more than a year. I think a lot of citizens have wanted to see it up and running. My timetable on the project, way too long. Again, we take in here, a bottom, we would simply ask this. We, will each of you keep an open and informed mind to assist us in continuing what we truly believe will be a project we will all be proud of and will be a model for others around Georgia and even the country? We trust each of you to say yes to that. Thank you. I have to say, if I was in business, ten years to get a project up and going that some people are getting done in two years, that's not a model program. Be transparent. I think a lot of this legal stuff could have been avoided if you'd just be truthful about what's going on. I think things are being hid and that's not right to do. Thank you for your time.
That's the last of our public comments. We will move to roundtable. Mr. Fletcher?
Yep, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. and Ms. Martin for supplying such an informative field trip for the, uh, Four H Club, for the Horse Quiz Bowl. Um, they actually gave a tour of their farm for about six, um, six children in Four H, and I really, I just wanna say I really appreciate that and we learn so much. Thank you.
Well, I do have a couple of things. The first one I wanna talk about is emotional control. Um, when we look at our community, we all love Lamar County, or we wouldn't be here. I mean, that is the reason that we're here. Uh, ultimately, we all know that there are issues and concerns, that there are two sides to every story. And obviously, you know, we, I heard the comment earlier tonight, we're not responding to the people here. This is less than point three percent of the population. So this is not like this is on a ballot and, and it's being voted on by the entire Lamar County population, so we're talking about a voice. So our job here is to represent the entire county. Our job is to do our best to get it right. I mean, I, I, I was talking to someone today at the grocery store and they said to me, Ryan, uh, if the FBI is actually looking into this, why do y'all even need to make a motion to do a forensic audit? FBI don't need you, Ryan, to tell them to do an audit. Said you're absolutely right. But on the other side of the coin, if we do a frivolous lawsuit, and obviously, uh, Commissioner Love had just mentioned a few moments ago that he was served, do you not think the county will be sued for, for, for negligence or for, for, for enforcing something that we don't have the authority? So as of right now, the, 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 uh, board is doing the best they can, we can to make sure that we're following the recommendations of our council. That's all we can do. We have a conflict council coming in, that hopefully that will help as well. But the part that I really wanna speak about tonight that bothers me more than anything else is I grew up in this community. As a little boy, I always thought one day I wanted to be sitting up here being able to help. When I worked for a, uh, health style physical therapy company, my job was to go out and look at communities and see if they would be a good fit for me to open up a rehab facility. I have friends that still do that work to, today. And I had phone calls over the last couple of weeks of, of several of them, who said Lamar County has come off of our board for any type of development that we would be involved in. And it's not because of the fact that there's a legal suit out there, but it's because of the nature of the hostility that they say that, that is being portrayed in our community. So I ask you, I, I, I truly empower you to please, employ you to please, think about how we are representing our community. FBI is involved and bottom line, I'm, I'm quite sure that those guys do a phenomenal job to get to the bottom of whatever, uh, investigation that needs to be done. I feel totally confident that if something was done that the board members or that I didn't know at the Solid Waste Authority, they will figure it out. They don't need Ryan and Trailer to tell them to do that. The second part of that, when we start looking at personal attacks and personal agendas, you know, I had somebody in this community that I, I've looked up to more than, than a lot of people. And they came and talked to me and asked me questions about the Solid Waste Authority, and we talked through it, back and forth. And at the end of the conversation, we both had a great conversation, and then it went on to personal things that Mr. Poor did fifteen, twenty years. I didn't know Mr. Poor back then. So again, remember, we are all people and what we're talking about is whether or not the Solid Waste Authority did something im, im, improper or if in fact that Mr. Poor did something illegal. Again, not something we would know about, not something I would know about. Outside of that, the next thing I wanted to talk, uh, I wanted to mention tonight is this. Ultimately, who do you represent? You represent yourself and you represent Lamar County. Every time you put a discussion post out or anything you put out there, I had another individual who said, you know, if I was a little younger, I'd be storming the, uh, I'd be storming the Capitol when everything was going on with, with, with President Trump, I would have been one of the first ones to storm the Capitol. And then the next comment was, you know, well, here, I'm, I'm older now, so this is my attempt to storm the Capitol. The storming the Capitol here is storming your county. So again, I can't say it enough, I, I, I truly, I, I, I've had people call me and I'm talking to them, I'm trying to do the, actually the best I can, and I appreciate those of you who are actually listening and, and trying to discuss different things, but for those of you who think that by putting our county out there on Fox Five in a negative light is gonna help you with your tax dollars, one of the guys called me and said, Ryan, you better keep finding a way to pay that fifty-seven hundred dollars that you're paying for taxes every year, because you're not gonna get any tax relief from any company because nobody's gonna wanna come here. And then when I get a tax on personal, how I, how I personally do things, last month alone, the, the, the Boys and Girls Club was trying to raise money for a matching grant of a hundred thousand dollars. They succeeded. I went to the bank and borrowed a thousand dollars to help them get that goal, and the girl sitting there said, why are you doing this? You don't even have kids that are going to a Boys and Girls Club. I said, because there's two kids that live down the street from me that come to my office all the time, they talking about the Boys and Girls Club, to how much they love it. So when we start sitting here thinking about how we are attacking people, it's okay to attack the issues. But have respect for people and have respect for your community. At the end of the day, that's all we got. I know a lot of people didn't grow up here like I did, but this is not the Lamar County that I grew up seeing. This is not the one that I was all excited about one day being commissioner for. So with that being said, please have a great rest of your month.
Are you taking any motions for adjournments? I have a motion by Commissioner Thrasch.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gillis. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.